Live, we're going to talk about reversing the skin age.
Yes.
Give it one second. Live, we're going to talk about reversing the skin age. Kind of figure that out. All right. I will get the tech down eventually. All right, ladies. So for those that are joining us live, if you're ready to reduce fine lines and wrinkles, get back your glow, and actually like what you're seeing in the mirror again, then comment in the comments, say me, if that's you dropping me. I am Lydia Martinez, Ebling Certified Fitness and Nutrition Specialist and Hormone Health Coach for women over forty. And today we are breaking down some top mistakes that women make with their skin. Now, it's just not women, right? But I mean, women over forty, because let's be honest. Metapause, it's tough out there on those menopause streets. Is it or is it not?
It's really tough. It's very tough.
I have women tell me all the time, Celia, you know what? I have not changed anything. I eat pretty good. I always have, you know, I keep the sugar down. I'm active. Maybe I'm not crazy in the gym, but I work out and my body's shifting and changing. I'm gaining weight. And I'm not having changed anything. And it's just not with our body. That's why I bring that up because it's just not with our body. It's like even with our skin, I've used the same skincare routine. Women will say, I use the same skincare routine for years. And all of a sudden, my skin is oilier, or it's more ruddy. And of course, we got the fine lines, the wrinkles, the saggingness. I mean, all kinds of crazy things happening. And today I have a very good friend, Nancy Reagan, but she's not just a really good friend. She's a licensed esthetician. She's been in the industry for over thirty years. She has a salon here in Florida with us, right up the street, Bellarina Spa. And today she's going to share some of the top mistakes that women make when it comes to their skin. But we're also going to talk about how you can actually reverse your skin age in like fourteen days. That's like crazy, right?
Yes.
But it's real. And what's real about it, it's without like lasers and needles and knives and things and all the different toxins that are out there. Not that I'm beating up toxins, but we know what that can do to the body. So without further ado, please help me welcome, guys, give me a cheer, a chat, a yay in the comments, and help me welcome Nancy into the session.
Hi, guys. I'm Nancy from Bellarina Spa and Skin Diva Labs. And hopefully this presentation will go according to plan. Technology and living streaming has not been like the best, but we're gonna get there. So today I'm going to go through the top five skincare mistakes women over forty make. A simple shift that helps you glow again, no matter your age. I really want you to discover a couple of things along the way. So let's see. The big question is, is this for you? If you are experiencing a skincare problem, please put it down in the chat and let me know what it is. If you're over forty and all of a sudden your skin has changed, I'm asking you, hey, this for you. It might be for you. You have tried like me, every product out there known to man. You have half empty bottles on your bathroom counter, and you don't really have real results. This also might be for you. And the third thing is, you really want glowing, healthy skin without starting from scratch. And if this describes you, you're in the right place this Saturday morning. And let's get ready to learn how to revive your skin, glow again, no matter your age. For all of you who stay on to the very end, I do have a special one-on-one fifteen-minute Glow Getter Express, and we will be magically picking somebody from all of the attendees on the live event. So stay to the end. This is a hundred and fifty dollar value, and I would love to have a one-on-one with you and discuss your goals and where you're headed for your actual skincare and what you want to do. Why me? Like, and that is a big question. I am a diagnostic esthetician with over thirty years of experience, which means that I get to the root cause of what's going on with skin. So if it's hormonal, if it's pigmentation of some sort, if it is breakouts, and it's from menopause or food or toxins, I get to the root cause of what is happening with your skin. I have had three spas. Bellarina is my third spa. I started off with a small day spa. I had a hotel spa at the Marriott and have been in the New York Times Parade Magazine and MD. Now, if you've, I'm sure you've seen a couple of these things online. My experience with working with people and working with women especially, I've worked with, I have like this broad expanse, so it comes from working with skincare survivors, people that are going through hormonal skin, like a lot of changes, and especially with my clientele that is skin over forty. That is what's happening. My journey here was nothing but traumatic. And sometimes I'm like, hey, that was quite the feat, but it gave me the foundation to actually be here, having the conversation and being able to have this conversation with you. I've overcome numerous health challenges, including fourteen surgeries, allergies, and like Epstein-Barr virus, chronic fatigue, thyroid cancer, hormonal acne, mercury poisoning, cicaterra poisoning. And I have tried everything to make my skin and body like work again. And I was able to do that with a lot of education and with really, really diving into the industry. When I'm in the treatment room, that I was all of a sudden hit over the head with what was happening with women, and I was out to try to fix it. So I saw these women that for them, the skin was an enemy, and they were trying everything possible to try to fix it. And there was marketing and everybody was talking to them, and they knew that they needed to listen, but they had no idea who was actually telling them the right thing. These women also had tried everything. They tried lasers. They have tried fillers. They have tried botox. They've tried everything. They've tried the miracle cream. They've spent a little money. They have spent thousands and tens of thousands of dollars on treatments and products that they come back to me and say, oh, well, this didn't work. Nothing was working long term, and despite the efforts that even me working in the treatment room, clients were getting a temporary solution, but nothing that was working long term for them. It also made me realize that the industry that I'm in, the skincare industry, that something was very critically missing. That maybe we weren't working on repairing the skin and really restoring the skin. Maybe we were just covering up the issues. So you know how I said I was diagnostic? I get to the root cause? Well, most places you go, you have cholesterol. Here, here's a pill for it. They're giving you something that's not finding the root cause. They're actually masking the symptoms. There we go. Let's see if we're, oh, there we go. So I wanted to ask the questions that no one was really asking. Why women were struggling so much with their skincare? Why isn't hormonal skin treated differently? Why was no one talking about the barrier repair? And to me, all along, and this has been going on for years, I mean, since the mid nineties, the skincare industry really got it wrong. They were giving us glycolic. They were giving like a high dose glycolic, a high dose peels. We were stripping the skin. We were thinning the skin. We were not doing barrier repair. There was no cellular support. And on top of that, we were bombarded with so much marketing. We were left alone to try to figure it out. I can remember going to a very popular department store in Tennessee and desperately, desperately worried about my skin, and my skin was not able to really do anything. And it was awful. I had acne. I had cystic acne. And I sat with this lady. She sold me this crazy expensive system. She said, you really have to splash your face twenty times a day. And twenty times a day, I would splash my face late morning and night, and I still had the whole problem of the acne terrible skin. And big, big thing, she wasn't addressing the root cause of my acne. So I got down into the skincare trenches. I wanted to know, how do I fix the barrier repair? And how do I fix that barrier? What do I get? What do I need to do in order to repair the damage that's been done? And when I do, when I can repair that damage, can I restore cellular energy and balance? So those were things that were happening, and I needed to dive in and figure out how I can fix this. At the whole root of everything is, I don't want to look twenty-two. I want to look like me, but I want to be glowing and radiant. So to me, at my young age, I don't care about anti-aging. I don't want to look twenty-two. I want to look the best version of me. So that whole anti-aging mindset, I was like ditch that. That's so like, that's so nineteen nineties and so not there. The second part is, I wanted women, I went through a terrific time with, with like immediate menopause at thirty-seven from a hysterectomy. So I wanted women to be able to glow all through that stressful hormonal time of their life. And it really starts in the mid thirties when you start going up and down and up and down. And this is stressful and it's life. So how can you continue to glow through this whole part? Up until your eighties or your nineties, and I still, I have a client now who's eighty-seven. She's adorable and drives for her facials and wants her skin to be the best version because she's got an upcoming wedding that she's going to be the grandmother, and she wants to look amazing. So how can you rebuild your best skin now? And in the long run, it's not about embracing like who you are and letting your natural beauty, or it is about embracing your natural beauty and letting you shine through and not necessarily turning back that clock that is there. We will never be able to get that clock. We can only look the best for who we are right this second. So some of the things I needed to address with what you were doing is, why does your skin feel off even when you're buying the very, very best products? So you're doing all the right things, but your skin feels dull, dry, reactive, flat. And you're like, what the heck is going on? I'm buying the very best serums. Why is it not working? So I really want to show you why it's not your fault. And it's, it's when you understand, you're like, oh, wow, that's cool. And now I get it. So you didn't need more products. You really just need the right system. That's me doing microneedling. I am in the treatment room now. Once, sometimes they let me in there twice a week. It is really a connection. So I love seeing how the skin really, really transforms. Microneedling, if you ever have any questions, it's a cool thing to do. The other part is looking at the counter of, and I've seen every skincare known to man, and looking at it and going, hey, what are all these half-used bottles? If anybody is there, you can raise your hand. You know what it's like to have all those bottles and you're going. Or I've always said, I never want to be a memory in somebody's bathroom cabinet underneath because I don't want somebody to go, oh, it was so bad. I had to put it in the bottom of the bathroom cabinet. The other part that got me was ten-step layered routines are so not okay. It needs to be simple. It needs to be easy. It needs to be what I call bulletproof and ready to go. The other part of this is, it needed to work on inflamed skin. It needed to work on tired skin and anybody that was completely like overwhelmed. So when the products are working and you're hoping they're finally going to work, there's TikTok out there. There's so much chatter going on. And you're going and your next door neighbor goes, hey, this product is really, really good. You gotta try this. Or Suzie down the street has decided she's going to be in MLM, and she's got, oh, this is really great. It's got scientific proof and so forth and so on. So you've tried all those products, and most of them do nothing for the skin. And your skin on a big scale really can't process a ten-step routine. That, that's not okay. It's complicated. It, who's got time for it? And most of the time, they're doing more harm than good simply because of how they start with the wrong kind of cleanser. More is definitely not better, and it's confusing to the skin. So buying more products in the hopes that you're going to find a solution can actually backfire. Your skin doesn't need more products. What your skin needs is really a strategic synergistic that puts everything together, system that repairs and restores the skin barrier. The skin barrier is everything. In order for your skin barrier to really be glowing and beautiful, you have to calm it down. You have to feed it and you have to protect it. So there's all these steps that you need to go that go one by one. And once you repair at the source, the skin, the skin then has the opportunity to really, really glow and be the skin that you want it to be. So things that are in the protocol is, there's no fragrance or irritating fillers. It's a comprehensive barrier protection. There's actives that work and actives by, actives, I mean ceramides, peptides, NAD plus boosters, everything that can actually restore the cells and repair the cells from things that we've done in our youth that I don't know about you guys, but I was out in the ocean and swimming and sailing and everything at a very young age. I even was a lifeguard at fourteen. So getting that kind of sun damage is something you want to repair as you're moving on. So what I was looking for was something that was a step-by-step skin revival, skin restore, something that was going to be long-lasting and was going to work together. And it's not your skin. You, you haven't caused the problem. It's how the skin has been treated. So you can't blame yourself for things that haven't been working. And I hear a lot of people go, oh, I guess that's what aging looks like, so I just have to live with it. Or maybe my hormones just ruined everything, so I just have to like sit there with my hormones. Or I've always had bad skin. It's been that way, and it'll be that way forever. And it's really not true. You do not have to blame your skin, and you don't have to give up hope when you're, for your glowing skin. Your skin isn't the problem. It's the way it's been treated. And with the right system, you can truly glow and be, to have your skin restored. This is a before and after of a client, and you can see how the skin barrier was damaged and actually it was repaired. So the, the, out there, the people think, hey, if my skin is damaged, there's nothing that's going to work. So yes, there are some very expensive, high-end products out there, and because they are not able to absorb, they will never, ever nourish the skin. So it's not your fault. It's simply a sign that your skin barrier has to be fixed first, and it's completely crying out for help. In order for the skin barrier to repair, you then can fuel the glow. So some things that do this are ceramides. Ceramides are like in between the bricks of a, if you were looking at the skin and cells were bricks. So ceramides are kind of like the mortar around the bricks, so it holds the cells and plumps it up. When you don't have the mortar, the ceramides, your skin looks dull and lifeless. Peptides are these amazing messengers that stimulate the skin. I put down that they stimulate collagen production, but they do a lot. Different ones have to have different messages. NAD plus is something that we start losing, of course, at in our thirties, and it declines as we age. When you're boosting the cell and giving it cellular energy, that is amazing for rejuvenating the skin, for glowing and healthy skin. And a new controversial topic is methylene blue. A lot of people are talking about biohacking and taking it internally. We are talking about it as a researched, very much, very, very much researched ingredient that is, when used topically, is a super antioxidant and helps to reduce the inflammation. So your skin isn't bad. Your skin, it just hasn't had the right support. And I hope you don't ever give up on your skin because you just need a system that's going to heal it, and you need one that works and not just hype. And there's a ton of the hype out there. Next one is, you're taught to question the industry, but most skincare is not designed to heal and repair, sadly enough. And there's a lot of people out there that trust brands that simply don't deliver. So there's a lot of hype in the skincare industry, the marketing, the noise, the people talking on, it is, there's a lot. So when you're listening to that, it is too, it's, it's sometimes just so noisy. You don't know who to believe and who not to believe. Most products that are created are designed to sell. It is designed for you to sell and not to actually repair. The beauty industry sells mostly fluff, mostly marketing, and very little function. You'll see fragrance. You'll see fillers. You'll see beautiful bottles. You'll see things that don't have barrier support. You'll see nothing, pretty much nothing out there that's mainstream, has cellular fuel. And they keep you chasing for the next, what's the next thing, but not actually healing your skin from within. So many of my clients, and maybe you also, they were so skeptical, skeptical and completely what I called skin stressed. You're let down so many times, so many times, and you really become cynical about, hey, nothing works? So I'm just gonna use my bar soap, or nothing works, so I'm gonna go back to what my grandmother used. Or nothing works, I'm gonna use what I used in my twenties and thirties. And what that does is you end up being so skeptical that you're, you're burned by the false promises, but it's, you just don't have the right system or the right ingredients that are working to truly repair so that you can trust and glow. So the real skincare truth is, and you guys see it every day and you're bombarded by it every day, is they're focused on selling flashy ingredients, flashy this, flashy packaging, and it is not ingredients and not what's working and not the formulas. It's simply designed to really sell products. And that, that has been the skincare industry since day one. Back in when I first started, I had this amazing master esthetician that I was learning from. And she sold a skincare line that had like literally, it was a mix and match. And I had, every facial I did was custom, and I had to know all of these ingredients, and I mixed it and matched it. And so I, I said, oh, my gosh, you sell this. And I was so like worshipping the ground that she walked on. And she goes, oh, yes. And I said, well, I'm starting. I have a little skincare room. What should I start with? And she was like, oh, you need the entire system. You need it all. Well, the entire system, everything for me to start, and this is thirty years ago, was about five thousand dollars. And that at the time was a lot of money, but she insisted that's what I needed. And as I learned after buying everything and then watching some of the product actually go bad because it had been sitting there for two or three years, I never even used some of it. And if she had just been honest upfront and said, hey, start out small. These are the things you're going to be needing. Like, it would have been a whole different relationship and a whole different belief. But her goal was to get me to buy, and that was part of the skincare industry. So you guys know what the beauty industry does with the fluff versus the function, the pretty bottles? What is not being fed is the cellular fluid, excuse me, is the cellular fluid. And it's not about necessarily healing, and we want it to be about healing. I'm going to take a sip of water real quick, so. Which gets me to why I created Skin Diva Labs, and it's a bio-barrier repair system for what your skin actually needs. When I was in the treatment room, I was looking for a product that I could use for very sensitive people and also for people that were cancer survivors and very much needed to be able to have this versus, this versatile skincare line. And I started working with this biochemist, and one thing led to another. And I needed it to be vegan. I had to have no fragrance, no toxins, no color. It was, and it sounds very boring, but I also needed it to actually fix the skin. So if somebody was coming in for a facial, they needed to walk out with as great a dramatic change that they could get in either sixty or ninety minutes. And I needed that to happen. And in talking with her, because a chemist, like they understand how the ingredients And in talking with her, because a chemist, like they understand how the ingredients work. And with the repair system, she truly was one of those people that understood how to to repair and how we were gonna drive and change the skin texture and change the cellular repair part of the cell. I needed it to be clinical actives. So I needed it to have ingredients that had proven by all this this science, that everything that was out there, that they actually worked. And if you've ever looked at ingredients and you've ever used Chat G P T, you know that a lot of times in skincare, it'll say, oh, it's got vitamin C. Well, the vitamin C could be at the very bottom of the list. Or the vitamin C could be not in an airless pump, so it's not an active vitamin C. The other part of this bio barrier repair system is I needed it to protect the skin, repair the skin and restore the skin. And that is a huge or like tall, tall order. But in order for women to be happy with their skin and to walk out, because we first tested this on our clients doing facials. So they had to walk out in an hour and be so happy with that. They were rebooking their their facials and coming back to see us. So it wasn't just a one-hit facial and never coming back again. Whoops, hold on. I'm like, oh, there we go. And it's it hasn't been that like people, if you're looking at it, is you're not necessarily, it it's not your fault. It's just you haven't had the right option. And I wanna show you an opportunity to start so you can have like amazing skin. And here's one of our reviews down at the bottom that I just I'm frequently getting comments about how much younger I look. I love my fifty-eight seasons of life. Highly recommend Suzie. This was and it or is rather one of my clients. Um, she's a snowbird because they come to Florida in the winter and then they go up north in the summer. And after she had been testing the product for a while, this goes back almost two and a half, almost three years ago. She came in and she was laying down and I was getting ready to do a facial on her. And she looked up at me and she goes, you know, I just love washing my face at night. I was looking at her like, I've never seen anybody that loved washing their face at night or ever heard it. But that's how much she loved the skincare and how much it meant. So what I did is created a step-by-step system. And it goes with what's called the bio barrier repair. And each step builds on the next step so that everything works synergistically. Um, it is super simple, as you can see from down below at the the next review. Is I had no issues implementing into a new skincare regimen. I love the vegan, zero toxins, high-quality ingredients. And my skin is more plump and satiated. That's my fancy word overall. So the skin is really, really, really changing. Here are some of our before and afters. And we're not a gigantically huge company. Um, but these are from our actual, this is from our clients that actually use the product and did their own befores and did their own afters. The first one at the top on the left is Patty. And I think this is like thirty days after her, after she had first used it. And she, you can see the difference completely in her fine lines and especially in the cheek area. I wish she hadn't smiled on the second one, so you could really see the skin difference, but it's dramatic. Um, the second top right um is Celeste. And you can definitely see in the crow's feet area and also in the nasolabial fold of how it softened and repaired and in that. That's after about thirty days. Um, down below, Miss Stone. She's like glowing, uh like she's not glowing in the first one and she's really glowing in the second one, of course. And you can see the softening of the lines on her forehead and also the lines underneath. And then our bottom one on the right is Susan. And she is a ongoing client. This is after four months. So I wanted you to see what could change. And this was her four months. She also though, I she does facials, but nothing radical. She's not a microneedling person. She just does a really nice facial. But these are our before and afters. So in the big scheme of things, people li- uh and came and would blame themselves for their skin. And your skin isn't failing. It's been the products that were failing. Um, and that is why I did Skin Diva Labs and why it's called the Bio Barrier Repair System. Because it works in the surface to start repairing the source, the problem. And once you do that, and once you repair that, everything else changes completely. This is the Smarter Skincare. It is vegan, no toxins at all, no fragrance. Um, it is built on amazing restorative ingredients. Um, it is built on N A D plus, niacinamide, ceramide, C O Q ten, peptides, um, everything that was going to first fix the skin and repair it and then actually send the ingredients in. So there is the first thing, which is the Dewy Herbal Cleanser. And you might say, oh, any cleanser will do. Um, hey, maybe not necessarily because most cleansers strip the skin. And something I learned is most cleansers out there have emulsifiers in them. So an emulsifier helps to make oil and water blend. So when the cosmetic chemist is making a product, um, they will put an emulsifier in it to make sure that something creamy and something with water actually go together. And when that happens, you become super sensitive. A lot of times people will use a cleanser and they'll go, oh, my gosh, it's making me so red. That is the emulsifier reacting to the the skin barrier because it's going nuts. Um, also in a cleanser, you want it to exfoliate a little bit and you want it to keep your skin super soft. Our skins should not feel dry, dehydrated, stripped. You have to prepare the skin properly first in order to be able to do the the rest of the system. Uh, the next one is a toner and I really, like I called it a serum toner. So and the reason for calling it a serum toner is because I put hyaluronic in it and I put probiotics in it. So once you prepare your skin, then you with the right cleanser, you then need to make whatever you're going to do. You have to detox the skin. And you also want to make sure that the hyaluronic is pulling moisture into the skin. The the not the biggest, but it is the number one problem that causes our skin to age is dehydration. So if I can repair the skin with dehydration, what follows any of these specialty ingredients will actually work on the skin. And that's what we wanna see happen. We want, if we're gonna, if you're gonna pay money or we're gonna pay money for ceramides, peptides, N A D boosters, I want them to work, but they won't work on skin that is not prepared properly, if that makes sense. The next one is the Everything Lift Serum. This is the powerhouse. And actually, it's the two together that really work synergistically. The Fountain of Firm and Everything Lift Serum. Serums are truly the magical miracle workhorse of a skincare program, a skincare regimen. Serums are what is if they're created properly and it's not marketing, they have the molecules small enough to actually absorb into the skin. And when that happens and they're absorbed, they are then able to make the changes in the cell and repel repair the cell. And that's what you're looking for. The Fountain of Firm cream helps to not only repair it, but also for it to protect the skin because you're protecting from the outside world. You will still need sunscreen if you're especially in sunny South Florida. But on the other hand, there, you always want to, I'm a really big fan of mineral sunscreen. And if you have a question about it, please don't hesitate to ask because you do need sunscreen, but most of it is filled with chemicals. And you probably don't need to be putting those toxins on your face or even on your body. And the Miracle Blue Blue Velvet Day Night Mask is designed for you to wear. And some some of my clients wear it every night. So you could wear it every night and while you're sleeping, I don't know if you know, but while you sleep, your body repairs and restores itself. Your brain even gets completely washed out. So when you do that repair, it is a nightly thing. The mask has ceramides and it really works hard overnight to repair. So for those of us that need that nightly repair, I'm one of them. Um, I actually put it on and add add on top of it the serum and the cream, just to give it an extra boost. This is smarter skincare that's super easy. So I have for you two options. Excuse me again. One is the Bio Barrier Repair, and I call it the Thirty-Day Cellular Reset. These are our many versions of the cleanser, the toner, the cream, the serum, and the mask. It is a complete set that will help you com- like buy you, you buy it, you'll see your system, your complete skincare system, and it will wa- you can watch it repair your skin. It is one seventy-nine or regularly two twenty-five and it is one seventy-nine. And the bonus is if you like to try the option one, you will get a twenty-five dollar bonus, a system upgrade. And from another review, this is one of the people that you saw on the the before and afters. And she goes, talks about her glass skin kit. I saw changes in fourteen days and it started changing even sooner than that. And when people see that, it's most of the time, it's because of the cleanser is really starting to repair the barrier. She goes, my friends noticed my glowing skin even before my morning coffee, which I thought was hilarious that you would put in, but that was funny. Option two is the Skin Barrier Bio Barrier Repair System. And this is the Total Regeneration Protocol. This bundle, which is the large-size bundle, lasts about four months. Um, they're in the the larger sizes. And because of skin cycles, you really start seeing major changes after a month, two. Month two is kind of like because the first cell cycle will start to do a little repair. The second cycle will start to do more. We have approximately approximately twenty-eight to forty-five days in between our cells coming to the surface and repairing. So you're looking at the skin cycle over that time period. This is normally five oh three and it's on for forty-four seventy-five is the bundle. And it also comes with free shipping this weekend and a spa surprise. So if you're going to get the bundle, type in free ship and you'll actually get it for both options. But in this review said, I really started seeing results in about ten days. And now at almost a month, my skin looks better every day. These five products are all you need. My skin feels hydrated, plump, and the fine lines are fading. I love that it's vegan and toxin-free. So why do you wanna go all in on the full-size Bio Barrier Repair? Is really because you'll start to see more of what the skin does after month two. The cellular restoration, the the first things that you see when you have a skin that's actually repairing and restoring. Um, when you see that, the first steps is really you have to prepare, repair the barrier. And then it goes into actually down below, working in the cellular structure and actually making it long-term. And another, it, well, it also is our best-selling bundle, just to let you know. Um, she says down below, uh, and I have skin new sensitive skin and I had no issues implementing this into my new skincare regimen. She says, I love the vegan, zero toxins, high-quality ingredients, and it's good stuff. So I laid it out just to kind of see which one is right for you. Um, it shows you the use time, what's included between intro, full sizes, the visible results that you'll see, the bonuses that you get. And the price is one seventy-nine versus four seventy-five in the two different systems. Uh, also includes our Diva Diaries, our Skin Diva one oh one guide. I also have a list of non-toxic ingredients that I really like for you to uh pay attention to so that you're definitely um not missing or making sure that your your bathroom counter is void of toxins for the long term. Um, there is video demos that show you how to do every step. And kind of my skincare reset philosophy um from somebody who's been in the industry for a day or two. So just kidding. So again, this is the five-part Bio Barrier. You can do the intro or the full. It has the Repair Ritual Guide. The Skin Nutrition Checklist is also a good thing. It's inside the the Skin Diva one oh one. There's application demos and the bonuses that are about seventy-five dollars in value. So just imagine thirty days from now, if you had calm, hydrated skin and you're looking in the mirror. And I love it when women tell me, oh, my God, I turned and looked and I was like, wow. The other part is you're you don't have to like ever, a lot of women come in and it's, you know, like, oh, my gosh, it's I'm over, I'm done. And the sadder, the saddest ones to me are the ones that are fifty and they they're they're not even older yet to me and they've given up. And it's like they're like, oh, it's just my skin or it's just this. Or they're Googling everything and they can never restore their skin properly. So the Skin Diva Labs Bio Barrier Repair System is designed, simple, easy. It starts repairing the source. And once that does, everything starts to actually change. And the the comment is, after the days, I already noticed that my lines on my forehead were smoothing out. My skin tone is evening out and my face is always glowing. At forty-six, I'm getting compliments on my skin constantly. And here is the little thirty-day reset. And here is the four-month system that you And here is the four month system that you see on the bottom. And this is quite the, the, the comment from one of my, my clients is, I've had problem skin my entire life. Um, and she really has. And she also had gut issues that she had to deal with. We, we go to Lydia for that stuff and let Lydia work with that. I do have a lot of nutrition background, but um, I like my clients to really go with a coach that can really guide them through that part of it. Um, it has managed to do long term. Now I'm glowing on the outside as much on the inside. It's incredible. It's soft, supple and utterly stair worthy for all the right reasons, which I was bowled over when I saw this. Um, and that's my favorite Henrietta. Um, and that's is from me to you. And I wanted to give you a system that is for the women, that is no confusion. Um, and for whoops, I'd see if you can, we're gonna get over here that you're done with over buying, done with chasing the glow. Um, I want to get you glowing no matter your age. And we're gonna have a winner of the Glow Getter Express. But I want to get our coach back on here. And we can go through all the questions that anybody might have on like, what you, you know, anything that might be.
Yeah, we got, we got some good questions.
Okay.
But I want to say great, and I always love listening to you, Nancy. Um, cause you, you just make things simple and um, I have so much to say. One of the biggest things though, I have to point out it, because I've talked to you before, like when, because we've been friends for quite a, quite a long time here. And I didn't realize that you had developed this product line. And when I saw one of your videos, I'm like, oh, my gosh, it's non-toxic, it's vegan. Because you know, we're so concerned about hormone balance and people don't a lot of times realize like they're trying to put all the good things, nutrition in their body, but they're still putting all these things on their skin and still having issues, but I was super sensitive, right? Um, I, I break out easy and I've had oily skin all my life. And when people are like, oh, you got great skin, what do you use? And I'm kind of like, did not want to tell them because I was never loyal to a product because my skin constantly change. And I know the worst thing I did, I'm telling you this because I used goat, I use goat's milk, right?
Goat's milk?
Yeah, but I would use goat milk soap for, just to take off my makeup and then use a cleanser. And you're like, you shouldn't be doing that. And I'm like, I know. But I say that because it was, it was an aha moment that because it, it, it breaks down the skin barrier. So even though I was like putting good ingredients back on my skin, it really wasn't doing the job. So I was kind of like wasting my time and money because of what I was doing. So I just want to throw that out there. Um, but Tracy, I wanted to say what Tracy said here. She goes, I've been using this system for exactly one month. I love my skin. I love how my skin feels. I did take initial pictures. Will take again to have you evaluate change of the skin. That's huge. And that's another thing too, because um, I was, I actually wrote down the question because like when you're doing nutrition and you're taking supplements, I'm always like, it's ninety days, right? Physiological response is ninety days. So I love that, you know, you're talking about how the skin changes. But also, um, it, you know, it, it's two months, but I notice in a couple of days, literally.
Right.
Just the hydration, the smoothness. I'm like how my makeup was going on, because I deliberately did not put on um, a primer. Cause I just wanted to see, because I could, I felt like I was seeing a difference in my skin. And like two days in, I didn't use any primer. And I was like, oh, my gosh, my makeup's going on so great, you know? And now it's been since May, like May, June, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm constantly getting compliments. Ryan uses the product. His skin is looking great. So we're loving it. Um, let's see, uh, Alicia says, I took it on vacation with me and barely wore makeup because my skin was glowing.
Yay.
Awesome. That's awesome. So some questions that have come in. Um, Alicia asked, you know, because while now, because she lives in Florida as well, mineral sunscreen, screen, what is mineral sunscreen and what do you suggest?
Okay, so again, the skincare industry is, you know, sometimes I just wish people were trustworthy and honest and integrity, but life is just not that way. So minerals, um, ta, like talc is really bad for the skin because it lays and especially as we get older, because it lays in the skin. And when you're using minerals, minerals reflect off the sun. So a, also minerals can be really good minerals or really bad minerals. So if it smells like rubber, I will tell you that. If it smells funny, then it's made with rubber and the minerals are petroleum based and you don't want to be using them. It's like using Vaseline on your skin because it's how they're made. The biggest, the two biggest factors of mineral is it reflects off the face. And so it kind of is a bouncer for the, the sun. So it reflects the UVs off. And it also, when we get older, our pores and gravity start to like look, go further down. It, our pores are not getting bigger. There is no pores because they don't open and close like doors. So it's just the gravity that you see. So it, you don't want anything laying in the, those pores that you see. And that's what, anything that's not minerals will lay in the skin. Minerals lay on top of the skin. That's why I'm such a big fan of mineral sunscreen. Um, it also makes a difference on whether or not it's ionized properly or milled properly. So they go through a process where they call it triple milled. So um, there's a couple of like, for example, Jane Iredell um, is a foundation that you can actually buy it. And I love it because they have every skin, you know, we're in South Florida. So we have every skin tone known to man. So we need a all the way across the board. Skin uh, foundation, but it, the foundation is mineral and it's an SPF twenty two, which is nice. So to me, that's plenty for every day. But if I'm going to go to the beach, I'm going to get something more. Super Goop makes a mineral sunscreen, um, which is a good brand. Kula is another one, um, that makes a really good mineral sunscreen. There are some really good companies out there. Uh, Super Goop just went on Amazon, so I'm not so thrilled with them. But you know, hey, it's like, it was a very small company. Their products go on amazing. They're really amazing products.
I like, I like Super Goop.
Yeah.
Um, so question, let's see, uh, let's see, where was it? I know Tracy. She goes, I always wondered what the toner, okay, she go, what the, what does it do? I missed that. Were you talking about the Turner Tracy? Um, and then Alicia asks, does this only work on your face? Or can you go to the neck and declat?
No, don't forget my neck. No, don't forget the tur, my neck. Don't forget the neck. Don't forget the declat. Uh, everything should be like, and if you have a really good friend or spouse or whatever, uh, you know, even doing your back feels really great every once in a while. It feels amazing.
Yeah, it, it really does. It's, it's, um, you know, when you first wash your face and you put good products on, but then it dissipates throughout the day.
Right.
Or, or like even a few minutes later. And I feel like with the Skin Diva, it, it's like, I can, like even now, I washed my face over an hour or so ago and I could still feel like the, you know what I mean? It's like, I still feel that refresh feeling on my skin, even though I have like makeup on. That's what I love about it. But I have a question for you. What are some things um, should they expect? And, and what do I mean by that? Cause we talk about, oh, my skin feels smoother, it's, it, it's glowing. But sometimes, you know, when you're sold a product, right? And there's like, okay, it's gonna purge, your skin's gonna purge. Should we expect something like that? Because it's got a mask in it, we've got toners, got all these different things. Is that?
It's so dependent on a person.
Okay.
So it's like, some people will try and there will be nothing. There'll be other people that will try and it could be, oh, my skin's not used to. Okay, so if your skin has been be, is, has been stripped on a daily basis for any period of time, you've used, I'm not saying anybody has, but let's just say you've used bar soap, you've used witch hazel, you've been stripping that skin. It is like, almost like fine sandpaper. And so you're actually trying to rehydrate like one of those sponges. It's a paper sponge and you're trying to like rehydrate it. And when that happens, sometimes you're going to have reactions because it's trying to get used to being plump and trying to get used to having hydration. And sometimes there are sensitivities, but for the majority, I was gonna say like ninety nine percent of people, they don't have any problems at all.
Yeah, I didn't make out at all.
Yeah, with my cancer people, um, as if, if there's something that goes on, it's usually something else. Um, and we did so much testing on this originally that we really wanted to know that all of the ingredients, I mean, you are putting actives on like niacinamide. And if we change one thing at manufacturing, for example, like about a year ago, we had to add a new preservative because the preservative that we had, they had actually quadrupled the price of the preservative. And so we're going through the testing to see. And what it ended up doing is we were able to add more niacinamide, which is a wonderful ingredient for building the cell. But at the same time, that can actually hurt people's skin too. I've not hurt it, but make it more sensitive because you're putting more ingredient in there.
Yeah, my, it, sometimes they can get a little bit more red, like.
Right. The niacinamide can flush the skin.
Uh, Alicia says, excuse me, I love the day and night mask. I know the day and night mask is awesome. Um, the question, okay, so Tracy says, yes, she was asking about again, what does the toner do?
Okay, the toner is really twofold. First, it is going to, it has probiotics in it. So the probiotics are going to help detoxify the skin. So if you have any environmental chemicals or anything that's on your skin, besides taking off excess makeup too. Um, I wanted it in a spray because I hate the way cotton waste. Like everybody's like, ah, just put it on a cotton pad. And I'm like thinking, well, you just gave the cotton pad all of your toner. But like, I like stressing it on the face and then taking, if you want to use your cotton instead of letting it dry and then just go around and make sure all your makeup is removed. But it's twofold. It's a probiotic. And also because it's, it, it's a probiotic, it has hyaluronic, which when hyaluronic is a moisture attractor. So it pulls moisture into the skin so that the skin is actually just, it just absorbs it completely.
Yeah, I, and I, I love it because I definitely noticed like it, um, soothing my skin when I spray it. So I, and I spray either what, duh, duh, and then I do my neck as well.
It, it has become like, it is the favorite product, which I, I never, ever thought it would become the favorite product. But especially in the summertime, it is the favorite product. I, it's like, it's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I love like, uh, Alicia mentioned the uh, day and night mask. And you were sharing with me about like doing the glycolic. The, if you, uh, so I did that. I had, and so you're wondering, I did, uh, it's a self dissipating glycolic pad. So, you know, thirty seconds or whatever. Um, and then I did the, the blue mask. Then I did, oh, gosh, if my skin felt so good. And not just like the texture feeling, it was just like, ah, this is so refreshing. Um, I know, I think, uh, I know you said you had videos, which that's great. I, I didn't realize that there's videos on how to use the product. And I love that you have the guides in there as well when they get the product. Uh, but Tracy did ask, uh, you know, like what, is there a right or wrong way as far as the, in the order of the product?
For at night Tracy or in the morning or?
Let's talk both. Let's talk about in the morning.
So in the morning, it's your cleanser, your toner, your serum, your cream.
Okay.
Um, that's it. And then you put on your SPF or your mineral makeup. At night, you have a lot more options. So you're taking off the day, so you're definitely using the cleanser. You're using the toner. And I, I just got into this nightly routine of I put the blue mask on. If I have had a like really stressful, dehydrated day. Um, yesterday I spent the whole day with a friend who had to have an emergency surgery. So it was in a hospital and so it was like really, really, blech. And so I was slapping, I was like, I gotta look good for the tomorrow morning. I'm slapping on everything I can. So I'm slapping on the blue mask and then I put the serum on. Then I put another cream on and I was just like moisture packed to go to bed. You can't hurt your skin with everything plied on. And also your body is healing at night. So it's like, that's what you want the skin to be repairing at night. So that's, that, you, you really cannot go wrong. And then the next morning, most of the time, in my case, because I'm so dehydrated all the time, it has absorbed. But sometimes other people, if you have oilier skin or more lipids, you need to like just barely wipe it off. And it, all the, the blue mask will, it, it really usually absorbs completely like a cream.
Yeah, I, um, it's so funny too, because I, I was totally not prepared for the blue mask. Yeah. Because you know, again, we, you know, we come back from, you talked about the network marketing industry, right? And the skin care products and everything. And we've done some masks to where it like freezes your face.
Yeah.
Right?
And those peel off once.
Exactly. And, and so all these different types of masks. And so when I put it on, I was like, wow, this is super cool. And I'm, I'm, uh, I've talked about it before, like I do chemical peels. I've, I've done, I'll do the, I mean, I'll do some hardcore stuff. Don't do what I do. But I'm like, Ryan, let me give you a peel. Let me do. He's like, and he has the redheaded gene. He's like, he cannot stand, like he's so sensitive when it comes to his skin. And I was like, okay, he was afraid to use the mask because I don't chemical peel. But he, he's like so smoothing and he's sticking to the routine. So that, that's great. Um, but Tracy says, do you have to wait for each product to absorb before adding the next product?
You, you can, but it's not necessary. Um, the toner, uh, sometimes I just like boom, 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 boom. I, I, I want my, I want you to have skincare like I use it, which is usually at the speed of lightning because I'm running around. So yes, does it work better if you let it dry? Probably technically, chemically, research wise, yes. But if you're rushing, do it, get it, you know, like get the products on. It's not going to make a difference. And especially uh, at night, sometimes I just dun, 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 and then get it on the face. And it's more about actually having it absorb. The, the reason I say that is because of the size of the molecules that are in the products. The, for the, the cream, for example, you always want the fountain of firm cream to be kind of your last thing because the molecule is designed to be a occlusive layer on the skin. So it's protecting the skin, not absorbing the skin. Whereas like the serums, you want them to absorb. The mask, you want them to absorb. So that's the difference in whether or not you let it dry or not. I hope that makes sense.
Totally, totally. Um, you know what? You know what I like about it, too? Because I remember when I first got the travel size, I was like, "Well, do you have an eye cream?" And you're like, "You don't need an eye cream." And I'm like, "Okay." And you really don't. It's honestly, because I've gone through a lot of eye creams, I've never been one hundred percent satisfied. And this is like, it just makes things so much easier. Again, I'm a big fan, obviously.
I just couldn't stand the, you put the eye cream on and then you can't see in the next morning and your eyes are crusty and it was like, it was always something. I was like, "This is insane, like the eye stuff." And we still have people that insist, you know, "I may do one, maybe in a couple of years." It just has to be like, I have to wake up and not be able to like, like not have crusties because of the eye cream. It's just terrible.
Well, either they're too dry and/or they're too, like, it's so much moisture on it and chemicals that it causes the crusty, like.
Right.
I always had an issue of like finding that happy medium. And indeed, it's like such a fine line. Like I said, you know, the Metropole streets, they're tough, right? It's like you need moisture underneath your eye, but then you have too much and then your wrinkles are more defined, your makeup's not going on right. It's just, you know.
Well, and eye stuff is, it's gotta be able to, it's gotta fix fine lines or wrinkles, puffiness, everything that's wrong. And also be able to work underneath where you're holding water from your kidneys. So it really has to do all of these jobs and be safe for your eyes at the same time. It's a lot.
Yeah, but I mean, that's the thing. It's like, you're, the whole line, it's repairing your skin, but it's also, it's simplifying things as far as a routine, but it's also cutting down on the things that you need, in a sense, you know what I mean? Because I haven't used any eye cream. I got a full thing of ordinary eye serum in my cabinet and I haven't used it since I've got the product. I haven't needed it, right? Because it has the caffeine in it and I haven't needed it. So that's the cool part. Well, ladies, I think we've answered the question. So do you have to, okay, we answered that one. Nancy, always.
I wanna, wait, we got one person who's gonna, you get to, you get to draw who's gonna win the Glow Getter. So you go, you draw. So any mini, mighty male and pick.
Okay. Like you put a number to everybody.
Okay.
And then, okay, so I'm gonna pick three.
Okay, so that is Shannon.
Yay, Shannon!
Shannon. Send me your email or Lydia can send me your email and I will send you a schedule to schedule your.
Tone salt?
Tone salt.
So, okay, so today is free shipping. The prices, the specials that you're doing, is it just for today as far as what you showed, far as the large?
The small and the large, the free ship and the gifts are just this weekend. And they are actually until, I think it's, I think it's tonight at twelve o'clock.
Okay.
So it goes till tonight. And I wanted just to be able to have a little extra. And there's something that I adore and special that goes with the large bundle that is super cool. But I wanted that to be with it, too.
Yeah, that's awesome. I love it. So you can go to overfortyskin.com
Right.
to check things out, read through the ingredients, but also order your products. So you have until midnight tonight as far as all the specials. And you use free ship.
Free ship is the discount code for your, to get free shipping. And that it will, it'll take the shipping off and it'll also notify us that you are getting extra stuff, extra good stuff.
Nancy, you're amazing. This is an amazing session.
Thank you so much. It was so nice having all of you.
And I can't wait to have you back again. All right, guys, so don't forget, go to overfortyskin.com. Today is the special. But even without the special, it is well worth the investment because we are talking about reversing your skin in little as really fourteen days. It truly is. You've heard the stories, you've seen the before and afters. And you are worth the time and effort and you are worth the investment. It's so important. As Nancy says, right, don't give up on the glow.
Don't give up on the glow.
All right, ladies.
Keep going and going.